Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of January 2nd, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, first, first big item on the list, it's a big one. We have some oaths of office. And first up is 3A. And our city clerk treasurer, Mr. Steve Hoagland, will administer the oaths. And we'll start with TJ Fantini. Yeah, because we got to get pictures and... More, more pictures. It's all good. All right, thank you for that. And next up is Ryan Walters. And next up, one more oath, Christine Cleveland McGrath. Okay, thank you. And next item with the new council member and seating new council. Item 3B is election of mayor pro tem. And mayor pro tem is in accordance with Resolution 3094, the city council must elect a mayor pro tem from among the council members at the first council meeting in January after each general municipal election and whenever a vacancy occurs. So, over to the current mayor pro tem, Mr. Anthony Young, who I'd like to thank for his service as mayor pro tem. I appreciate it. And I don't think I had you fill in for too many terrible duties in my absence, but thank you for being there. So, over to you, Mr. Young.
Thank you, mayor. It is definitely my honor to have served as mayor pro tem. The journey did these last two years in particular has been one on the tail end of COVID, but we as a city have done, I believe, an extraordinary job. We have a great committee of council members and a mayor. And so, I'm honored to have given that service. But with that, I'd like to also nominate a move to elect councilwoman Carolyn Moulton to serve as mayor pro tem for 2024 and 2025.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Walters to elect council, council member Moulton to be mayor pro tem. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Can I? Uh, yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And yes. And yes, you can. And just one more thing on mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem must appoint three council members to each standing committee at the second regular meeting of each year that follows the general municipal election. The appointments must be confirmed by city council and the staff will have a agenda bill prepared. And we'll just be looking for some names from the new mayor pro tem to fill that out. So, thank you for accepting. So, next up is announcements and committee reports. And I have a couple announcements that, first of all, I'd like to, I'm honored to welcome Mr. Fantini to the city council representing Ward 3 and look forward to his fresh perspective on the council. Also, welcome back Mr. Walters, Ward 1, Ms. Cleveland McGrath, Ward 2. I'd like to thank you both for your willingness to continue serving our Anacortes. Thank you also for selecting mayor pro tem and for accepting. I know council member Wal, Moulton is working on committee assignments. And I know my executive assistant is probably already signing you up for events that where there's some conflicts. Next announcement is our avenue improvements. Just a quick update, project continues good progress. And again, if you pass by even through the detour, you can see that it's not just about around about at 30th and R, but multiple intersections, significant sidewalk enhancements. And then, weather permitting, we should see some asphalt in the next two to three weeks, probably closer to three weeks. The project is still on schedule for completion in February. Public Works continues to monitor traffic flows and continues to work with businesses and residents in the area to minimize construction impacts as we work to improve our streets and, of course, improve access to our wonderful new skate park and pump track. So, that'll be nice. And then, finally, just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. May all the joys, blessings, health, and good fortune be on you, your families, and Anacortes in 2024. All right, committee reports. First up is fiber committee. Mr. McDougall.
Fiber committee met back on December 21st. So, I'm going to give you a couple of numbers that are out of date at this point, but we have surpassed 2,200 customers on net, which is a terrific number. We've also achieved citywide 47% take rate with the Gwimis View area actually passing the EDA area with a 46.9 take rate. So, we expect EDA will start to bump up again once construction begins. So, good numbers there. As far as EDA is concerned, the team issued an RFP for construction on, back on the 21st with, and its closing on the 31st of January. So, current engineer's estimate is about, is four and a half to 4.9 million for the total construction of that project. And the EDA project itself, you know, as we're expecting bids in end of January, targeting construction to begin end of February and rolling across kind of the four zones. Project may take roughly about two years to actually do it to completion. Some quick news on Gwimis View. That, that part of the construction, the sort of backbone construction there with Summit X is complete. And they actually came in 14.3% under budget. So, savings of nearly $300,000 on the construction. So, fantastic there, yeah. And that's what I got.
All right, thank you. Next up, public works committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The public works committee met at 5:00 today and it was council member Walters and myself and public works staff. We were excited to learn about planning for 2024 in the public works department. The public works director, Andrew Rayum, is going to bring a work plan to council. And that will tell us at a high level how much time that staff will spend on various projects over the course of the year, whether it's paving or street sweeping or maintaining pump stations. So, we'll have a really good view for council and the public of where the time is spent and what the goals are. And then, at the end of year, at the end of the year, we'll get a recap on what is actually, what has, what has been accomplished. So, that will be very welcome. We also talked about the water system plan. It's been in progress, that will be done this year. And also, the need for some other plans. It's all about planning. The transportation master plan will be worked on and incorporated into our updated comp plan. The update of that is coming 2025. We also need a facilities master plan, one for sewer and one for storm. And these will feed into the capital facilities plan. So, this will all be about maintenance improvement and planning for future population growth. So, it'll be really great to have that map going forward. The, we talked about the Siemens HVAC controls and training. There is a contract that will come to council next week for that. It's a three-year contract, a service contract, and that covers HVAC for the police department, the library, and city hall. It'll be about $82,000 for three years, including software, training, and built-in maintenance technician time. So, it won't be just we pay for every single call. That's, some of that's built in, so that's a plus. Parking code revisions have been, are almost ready to go. They'll come to council after the legal department is done with those, so that'll be pretty soon. One of the things that's included in those is 6th Street ferry landing, or ferry lanes. People sometimes park in front of driveways, so there will be paint in front of the driveways to help prevent people from parking there. That's just one of the things, but I won't go into any more of them. I feel like, uh, that is it. Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
One addendum, we also talked about wastewater planning and, and planning for the eventual cost of upgrades to the wastewater plant through changes to our fee schedule sooner rather than later. At one point, we were anticipating, you know, maybe tens of millions of dollars worth of upgrades would be needed, maybe $100 million worth of upgrades would be needed and fairly near term. The multi-jurisdictional state permit has been pulled back, but we know that there will be a future permit that will also require us to do something to improve the wastewater plant. When that happens, it would be nice to have some money to be able to make those upgrades and stay in compliance with the permit. So, we had just a brief discussion about the benefits of adjusting rates sooner rather than later so that we are collecting money and we can impose a smaller bump on people's sewer rates nearer term rather than a larger bump later on.
Okay, and next up is the information technology committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Thank you. Information Technology Committee met, again, also on December 21st. And IT has a lot going on. I'm just going to hit kind of a couple of highlights here, including a couple of numbers. So, in 2023, the IT department closed 1,585 help desk tickets. And there are 1,200 devices under management by the IT department. So, this is everything from big servers in the data center to, you know, laptops, cell phones, all the way down to like webcams and like SCADA system equipment. So, it's a, it's a huge breadth of, of systems and equipment that they manage. They are engaged with a consultant to produce an RFP for replacement for the Eden system, which is going to be kind of the software project of the next probably two years, really. And the ERP system, Enterprise Resources Program, is really kind of like a, a software suite for all of kind of a ton of city workflow and other sort of operations. We've installed some new, or they've installed some new firewalls at both the main data center. Also, we've got firewalls at the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, and Fire Department, and even at Washington Park. So, like, there's been a lot of focus on IT security in the last few years, and there's going to continue to be. Another item, transitioning of all of our cellular services to AT&amp;T FirstNet. And this is like a, it's a dedicated network or kind of dedicated partition of AT&amp;T's network for government entities. So, it's specifically designed for, for that kind of service. And there's like some additional priority and things like that over normal traffic. And finally, the IT department has been participating in incident response planning. And they even performed like a cybersecurity drill where they ran through a number of scenarios where like various kinds of like ransomware or business email kind of compromises and things like that. And those all went very well.
All right, yeah, thank you for the report and a lot of great work being done in IT, often unseen. All right, next up, any other announcements in committee reports before I move to item 4D? All right, 4D, this is confirmation of city engineer. And welcome, Mr. Lee. So, tonight I would, I'm going to ask for council's conference, confirmation of my appointment of Logan Lee as City of Anacortes City Engineer. Mr. Lee accepted our contingent offer of employment and is scheduled to begin working on January 8th. And Mr. Rayum will introduce Mr. Lee to council.
Thank you. I prepared a, a short speech, so it's gonna, we, the mayor and I didn't check notes ahead of time, so it's going to cross over a little bit. Good evening, council. Welcome, Councilmember Fantini. Council, the mayor and I would like to request your confirmation of Logan Lee as our new city engineer. Logan has been a licensed civil engineer in Washington State since 2014, holding the position of engineer in, for various private firms. He completed a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Washington State University with an emphasis in structural engineering. After interviewing Logan a couple of times, I'm confident that he will be a good fit for Anacortes. One thing Logan mentioned in his interview process is that when he was getting his undergrad, he envisioned himself working for local government where he would be able to leave a legacy of improvements that better a community. In my own words, he wanted to be a public servant, and that goes a long way in the municipal industry. Based on that and other discussions with Logan, I'm looking forward to seeing him flourish in the experience of delivering services and improvements to the Anacortes community. Another aspect of Logan that he, we discovered in the hiring process is that he wants to be involved in seeing his design built, which is a great signal that he is not only wants to design projects, but he wants to go in the field and verify during construction that the design actually plays out. This is not always the case with engineers, just so you guys, especially, I call them purebred engineers where they went through the four-year process of getting an engineering degree. Sometimes they could, don't even know how to get around Home Depot. So, we're really excited about, about Logan. This is not, so he is scheduled, oh, your mayor already said that. His first day is scheduled for January 8th. That's my short presentation.
Okay, so, I, I know I sent it all out to council last week. I didn't get any questions, but looking for a motion to confirm. Mayor Miller. I got a, Mr. McDougall and Mr. McDougall, I think, was slightly first.
Yeah. I move to confirm Logan Lee as city engineer.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Mr. Young to confirm Logan Lee as city engineer. Mr. Franciac, you take the vote, please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, and welcome again, Mr. Lee. Oh, yeah, picture. Okay, on to item 5, I believe, and it's public comment. And this is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda related to city business. And I have one member of the public signed up here in person. So, if you want to work your way up to the podium, Mr. Dan O'Donnell, and this is, topic is water. And the, and the council has already received your letter as well, and I've received your letter as well. So, if you can get a little bit closer and make sure the microphone is on and state your name and the city you live in. Okay, make sure the microphone, Mr. Hoagland will help you with the microphone.
Dan O'Donnell, 328 North Third, La Conner, Washington.
Okay, thank you.
The bad news is you owe the town of La Conner 46, $49,631.52. That's just my opinion. If you look over the past two years, you have made a profit on water of $8,173,301. You can afford to give La Conner a rebate that's necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members who didn't sign up wish to address? Okay, come on up. I think you know the drill.
Hi, Linda Martin, Anacortes. I wanted to publicly congratulate Mr. Fantini. He and I have spoken several times. We had a hard-won race and a well-run race. And the city of Anacortes voters have spoken. And as I said to Mr. Fantini privately, that I'm saying publicly, it's in my best interest and in all of our best interest to invest in Mr. Fantini's success. And so, congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, anybody else want to address the council during our public comment period? I do have a hand raised online, so it looks like a Paul Kurtzberg. And three minutes, please state your name and the city you live in, please. And you have three minutes. And you're unmuted, so if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Okay, again, apologize, we can't hear you, and that's okay. Well, again, a good way is you can always send to citycouncil@coa.org, I believe, and then all council members will get that input. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda, items 6A through C, council.
Ms. Hubig.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Hubig, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are on to item 7A, other business, and this is a contract award. Wastewater Treatment Plant Pump Station 16 reconstruction. This is a discussion item with possible action. And where did Mr. Rayum, Mr. Rayum? Andy, you're up. Contract award wastewater treatment pump station 16.
Sorry, they whipped out a 10-month-old baby over there, so I was...
I understand, get distracted by babies, squirrels.
Whoo, anyhow, okay, so this contract is with Wilson Engineering in Bellingham to design a new lift station 16, which will be in the same location as the existing lift station 16. It is going to go out into the road a little bit. Put it there for free. Let's see here, the, the lift station needs to be replaced because it's currently undersized for the flow it receives. It needs onsite generation, generator power. We currently park a generator there during the winter months and it's not exactly attractive to the person that's in their front yard. And so, we wanted to do a permanent generator installation at the location. And then, the last piece is to modernize the controls to reduce the amount of failure. It's just kind of aged out when it comes to the controls. The contract is not to exceed $258,290. And just so you guys know, the estimated construction cost is estimated around 1.5 to $2 million.
Any questions for Mr. Rayum? Any questions on this contract or, yeah?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
We did talk about this at public works committee just before this meeting and, and learned how necessary this, this really is, that it's, it is truly an exceptional amount of water that comes really quickly and is not, it's not a good situation and it needs to be fixed. So, I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign contract 23259 SEW001 with Wilson Engineering in the amount of $258,290 to perform the wastewater treatment pump, pump station 16 reconstruction, the design phase.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubig to approve contract award pump station 16 reconstruction design as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item 7B. This is Resolution 3139, 2024 Legislative Priorities. And we have this as an action item because, as you, some people definitely know, the legislative session is starting next week. So, Ms. Hub.
Mayor, council, members of the audience, tonight, I think, is the third time that we've looked at the legislative priorities, and I think that we are ready to go. I appreciate the, the feedback from, from council and the wonderful support from Jennifer Tottenham, who has worked to allow this to all fit onto one page, so...
Without a magnifying glass.
And that's a feat sometimes, so I just appreciate her support. And tonight, I'm asking for the city to consider adopting Resolution 3139, which would adopt the legislative priorities for 2024 for the city of Anacortes. And session begins on Monday, the 8th.
And I guess this is a start item, so before we turn it over to council, if any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, council, over to you. I think we've captured everything. Again, we've had a couple of good discussions. Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
One thing that we did add to this draft that wasn't in the previous draft because we didn't have the report from Washington State Ferries is a bit about the options for replacement of the Sydney Ferry prior... for replacement of the Sydney ferry prior to its expected return, or its hoped return in 2030. The report that Washington State Ferries issued was characterized, I think, by Washington State Ferries itself as not very hopeful. However, it did have at least one option in it for a foreign-built vessel that could make this run, and so, because that appeared to be the only option that the report identified as, as really even within the realm of possibility for the Sydney ferry. We put language in the resolution here to direct Washington State Ferries, to be clear, to have the, ask the legislature to direct Washington State Ferries to reinstate international service to Sydney before 2030 by purchasing and then completing that, that foreign-built vessel that they identified in their report. It's a, it's a not, it's not a complete ferry, but it's also brand-new. It fits the docks, it would be foreign-built, so it couldn't be stolen from the Sydney Run to run elsewhere in the system on purely domestic routes. The, the report doesn't go into great detail about whether it's really possible or not to get that boat as the, as our replacement boat for the Sydney Run, but what I do understand from WSF is if they are to do anything, it, it needs to be a directive from the legislature.
Any other comments or motions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Just for clarification, Mr. Walters, I read it a while ago when it first came out. Correct me if I'm wrong, part of the, the original Sydney ferry always ran to San Juan Island and then to Sydney and back. It was kind of a three, three-point loop. This foreign, if we were to pursue the foreign-built ferry, it could only run from one location in the US to one location in, out of this US. It could not stop essentially at San Juan Island. Is that correct?
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
That question is addressed upfront in the report, and I actually think the answer is it could pick up passengers in Friday Harbor or drop them off, one or the other, but not both. But, but the answer is addressed in, in the report. It's not exclusively that it could only run between Anacortes and Sydney.
Certainly far from ideal, but better than none. It's, all right. Any, any other discussion? Give us a motion, and, and then we'll start pestering you about which council members would like to go to Olympia next month, besides one that might already be there. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I'll raise my hand for that, and also I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 3139 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton to adopt Resolution 3139. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac. Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Abstain.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Next up is item 7C. This is the 20, 2024 Prosecution Contract. This is also an action item, because we need to continue the work, and Ms. Swetnam is presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Members of council, welcome. Councilmember Fantini, nice to see you on the dais. Members of the public, PowerPoint slow. So tonight before you is a contract to continue prosecution services through 2024. Currently, the prosecution services are provided on a contract basis by Craig Kammack and Julie Walters, and their contract expired at the end of calendar year 2023. So we want to allow for continuity of services. So to review prosecution services provided under this agreement, they represent the city in matters including personal, persons charged with misdemeanors, contested civil infractions, dangerous dog cases, but they also provide legal support to the Anacortes Police Department if they have questions that come up through their, their day-to-day operations. So we've brought a contract back for 2024 to ensure continuity of services. The term is 12 months. I know there's been a discussion about moving this position in-house, but until that happens, we wanted to make sure that the term of this agreement would, would guarantee that there wasn't a disruption in those services. So again, the, the two prosecutors are Craig Kammack and Julie Walters. So the, the pricing for this contract is, is broken down into two buckets. The first is a flat monthly rate, so that is what we pay them for prosecution services. That amount is $8,500 per month, and that's the, the cost regardless of the workload increases or changes. I want to note that in conversations with Ms. Walters and Mr. Kammack, they both noted that the, the hourly workload that they're spending supporting prosecution services for the city has essentially doubled in the last calendar year, which they attribute in large part to the additional time required for community court. We've also had some turnover in the public defender position, so, so they're spending significantly more time than they have in previous years providing prosecution services. The other bucket that's anticipated in this contract is an hourly rate to provide, to, to be in an advisory role for the Anacortes Police Department, and that isn't changed from the 2023 contract, so that's an hourly rate of $275 with a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000. So staff is recommending approval so that we can continue providing prosecution services and support to the police department until such a time as that position changes, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Ms. Swetnam.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. And just to confirm, so if we do hire someone prior to the end of the year, it's okay for this contract to end mid-year?
Yeah, so there, there are provisions in the contract that allow us to terminate the contract. I think what would happen in that case is we would evaluate, my, my thought initially is if we bring in a new person who needs some training, we'd want to make sure that there was some overlap between the prosecutors and that individual. If, you know, one of the contract prosecutors wanted to apply for that position and got the position, then we could probably terminate the contract a little bit sooner, but we need to assess that based on, you know, what, what happens with that position, so.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? I think they do have some work on Thursday to do, so if you're able to, to see this one through, I appreciate it. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
No questions, but one of the two parties, the attorneys from this contract, is my cousin, so I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Ms. Moulton.
I move we authorize the mayor to execute the proposed agreement for prosecution services for 2024.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the prosecutor, prosecution contract as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Abstain.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Being no further business before the Anacortes City Council, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night.